In the local.
On what?
Okay, so, uh, we are on and I would like to open, uh, the agenda for the Georgetown Planning Board July 12th, 2017 meeting in Memorial Town Hall, 3rd floor conference room. It's just a couple minutes after seven o'clock. We have a pretty short agenda tonight. We have meetings, vouchers, a couple of vouchers, one correspondence, a couple of additional items that we'll work into correspondence, uh, one public hearing, surety, and a planning office discussion on a workshop with Open Space Residential Development. So with that, we'll just go to the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a motion?
Sir.
I move to, um, approve the June 14th, 2017 minutes as approved, as presented.
Second. Okay, motion has been made and it's been seconded to, to approve the meeting minutes of June 14th, 2017 as presented in discussion. Noting.
Yeah, I, I kinda thought you would have brought this one up. It seems that this is, this is the copy that town council gave us, not the amended that we had done.
Let's see, where are you, what page or what number?
Uh, this is three.
Page three, yeah.
Let's see where it says, uh, whichever occurs earlier. I thought we had amended that.
Which, uh, which line are you talking to?
Um, talking to 123.
123.
121.
121. Establishment. That regulate marijuana establishments whichever earlier.
Didn't, didn't we change that? I thought we even, we took it out.
I, I, I do remember us tweaking the language a little bit.
Did we take it completely out?
Uh, I don't believe we did that. That would've.
I mean, just that three, those three words.
Oh, no.
Um, you know what, I did, y- you're correct in, in it would, it should read, "The moratorium shall be in effect through June 30th, 2018." Period.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, the purpose was for us to extend it.
Yeah. We don't know when to, um, we don't know when the town, if and when the town accepts this and approves it.
Yeah.
Um, if it does do that, if we put a period at the end of 2018 and the, the warrant provides for a different date, that will supersede automatically this moratorium.
Okay. All right.
Forgive me if I'm wrong, but this can't go, this is zoning, right? So this can't go to any voter without us first holding a hearing.
Correct. So it's gotta come back.
We're gonna get another bite at this apple.
Yeah.
This is, this is, to give them the idea, I think more that, yeah, sure, go with this, go with this language, bounce it to us now like you're going to have to do legally. We'll do the notice, post the hearing, hold the hearing, close the hearing, and then give our recommendations after that, is my understanding of how the process works. But I'm not sure what that timeline is there.
Yeah. I, I mean, Matt, if I just can interject one moment, it, it really doesn't matter if we end the sentence at 2018 or leave that other language in. It really doesn't matter. Because if the town does adopt a warrant article, right, relative to the law that's passed, um, that law that's passed by the state, passed by the town, is going to be the law of the land. It isn't going to matter whether the moratorium's in effect through June 30th, 2018, or an earlier date.
Can I just interject though? I mean, I, I recall that the board spent probably 15 minutes working on that one line. So whatever that wording ended up being, I think, is what should be in our minutes, right?
Yeah, I think so too.
Well, then, uh, in that case, Mr. Chairman.
I don't mean to be.
Throw my motion to approve minutes?
Oh, wait, we just, yeah. Motion. Yeah. Motion.
Take another stab at this?
Yeah, okay.
Next time.
Yeah. All right, I'll help to check that meeting.
So, let's see, another motion here. Uh, we'll continue these, uh, uh, we need a motion for that. We'll just table these and have them advise for the next time around. You guys all right with that?
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a motion about the vouchers?
Uh, one second, we'll get to that.
Cool.
Okay, we have two, yep, go ahead.
Uh, well, I moved to approve payment for the annual HP plot of service contract in the amount of nine ninety-five, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars, and for a set amount to be expended from the equipment planning account, well, as written here.
Second. Okay, motion has been made and it's been seconded to approve payment for the annual HP plot of service account in the amount of nine hundred and ninety-five dollars, and for said amount to be expended from the equipment planning account. Number as identified, in motion. Uh, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Actually, I do have one piece of discussion and it's too late, but, uh, it was that, was that part of our budget already?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
It's under equipment.
Great.
Uh, someone else wanna make a?
Mr. Chairman, I move, uh, we approve, uh, voucher to staples for office supplies in the amount of five hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-two cents.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion has been made and it's been seconded to approve payment of office supplies from the planning account number as identified in the amount of five hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-two cents for staples. Any discussion? No more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Then, there was this other one that was.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a, I move to approve the reimbursement to John Cashel Town Planner regarding the APA annual membership dues in the amount of three hundred and sixty-six dollars and for the payment to be expended from the.
Thirty-six.
Three, three sixty-six, three hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Three hundred and thirty-six? Oh, I'm looking at the wrong page, sir. I apologize.
No worries. Um, and for the payment to be expended from the planning office tuition account, fifty-three-twenty.
Second.
Motion has been made and it's been seconded to approve the reimbursement to John Cashel Town Planner, RE APA annual membership dues in the amount of three hundred and sixty-six dollars, and for this payment to be expended from the planning office tuition account number five-three-two-zero. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor? All right.
Aye.
John, do you have those originals? I'll make the correction.
Yeah, they're in that red, they're right here.
Um, it, it is correct at the top, but it was, um, there, there was a, an extra three in the, um, the amount column there.
Correct up here.
Yeah.
That's what gets it, but you're, you're gonna get, you're gonna get thirty dollars less than you.
The va, the voucher itself is three thirty-six, that's why I, I said, no, no, three thirty-six, but it is correct. It's that three, three sixty.
We have to fix that, that's all.
So the amount is three sixty-six.
Three six six dot zero zero.
Good catch. I'm gonna initial it, that's all right. Yep. Yeah, this is three sixty-six, we probably might lose same thing here.
I think we also have to fix the account number as well.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. To make a match up with the, with the motion. Take a peek at that, John.
Yeah.
It's fifty-three-twenty, fifty-three-twenty, according to this.
Correct.
Right?
And that's under tuition, so.
Fifty-two-hundred doesn't work, right?
Yeah.
Just, buddy, go with John.
Well, we can amend the motion, I'd rather go with the, um.
You wanna go with that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was prepared by, um, Mary, so.
Okay. Oh, Mary did, okay.
Yeah.
Where it was Mary.
She's the town accountant, she's, she's pretty, she's pretty good, she's pretty active.
So now we have to.
I haven't seen too many boo-boos from Mary. Um, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, um, amend my motion to, um, take the reimbursement, take a motion to take the reimbursement from the fifty-two, five-two-zero-zero-zero account as opposed to the, um, fifty-three-twenty account.
Okay, that, what's that number?
That's, that, that is the five-two-zero-zero account as opposed to the five-three-two-zero account that was in the motion. Well, presuming it is. Because Mary did it. Absolutely, I just wanna throw a quick John Hancock on it. We're good, that one, that was good.
And that's, that is three.
Okay, good.
So, um, I'm sorry, Harry, can you, can you amend that motion again, please?
Um, yeah, I'd like to amend the motion to, um, take the, uh, the payment of the reimbursement to the town planner from the fifty-two-hundred account as opposed to the fifty-three-twenty account.
Second.
So the motion has been amended and it's been seconded to, uh, take the dues in the amount of three hundred and sixty-six dollars, uh, from the planning tuition account number five-two-zero-zero. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
So, let's see, correspondence, Town of Rowley Planning Board, unless anybody had anything to talk about yet.
Those are new to me, sorry.
Okay, so that takes care of minutes, vouchers, correspondence, moving on to sureties. John, you wanna?
Uh, yes, this is a request, uh, for Palmer Lane, uh, to establish a surety, um, in accordance with the comments, um, staff report. Mr. Varga has recommended to this plan a little amount of a hundred and twelve thousand four hundred and twenty dollars, um, and that would ensure the completion of that subdivision in its entirety. If you do go through the spreadsheet, he did have listed all of the items that have been completed and all that remain and all of their associated costs.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, um, I'd like to point out that I'm recusing myself from this, this, um, issue.
So, not like.
As I did.
Consistent from the past.
As I, as I did and consistent with.
Yes. So, John, you have two motions here?
Uh, yes, yep. One is the establishment of the surety and the other one for the board's consideration is for Rob, the chairman, to be able to execute Form I, the performance bond, and Form K, that's a partial release of covenant, and that would be without further action of the planning board. That's upon receipt of the cash bond that's anticipated to be received as a result of tonight's vote.
Oh, she, she didn't come in and, she didn't, she's not coming in with the check?
Um, it, it's, um, this is Palmer Lane, this is Steve, Frenzi, he's coming in.
Oh, he is, oh.
Yeah. He's not coming in this evening, but he, he's aware of this amount of money, he's been working with, um, Dave Varga, and, um, you know, typically, say he was here with the check and we could execute these documents.
Right.
He isn't here with the check, so, once the check is received, I'll get in touch with the chairman and, um, if that's what the board so desires.
So we have two draft motions, um, if, uh.
I'll make a motion to accept the, um, hundred and twelve thousand four hundred and twenty-dollar surety for Palmer Lane.
One second.
Second.
So the motion has been made and it has been seconded to approve establishment of surety for Palmer Lane three lot subdivision in the amount of a hundred and twelve thousand four hundred and twenty dollars, which will be established in the form of a cash deposit made up to the town of Georgetown, Mass. Um, discussion?
The, uh, may I?
Please.
The only thing I, I see missing, and I'm not positive if, if this is correct or not, is the tree planting. When, when's that gone? What surety do we have that's happening? Wow, I'm surprised you missed that.
I, uh, I'll fess up, I'm not prepared for tonight.
Okay. And I wasn't sure, is it supposed to be here or should it be later on? Is there another one coming? Unless I missed it, I, it mean if it.
So I'm just looking at the, at the schedule A.
Um, so, if, uh, prior additions in verification of certificate of occupancy, the landscaping applicant must submit a letter from the architect, uh, stating that the building signs landscaping, lighting, and site layout substantially comply with the plans referenced at the end of this decision, wouldn't that cover it?
What, where are you reading the number?
Looking in the decision.
Decision?
From page, uh, fourteen.
I know the decision, but the surety is, is, well, it's supposed to be all of the things undone.
Did you say page five?
No, fourteen, uh, fourteen, one hundred and fifteen.
You know, we ought to do is amend that in, one is the recommended amount, say ten thousand dollars to, so increase the surety.
Right.
Yeah, so, you, you're right, Matt, yep, that covers it, that we're protected that way, and then it is the amount of money needed to cover it. And how much would be left?
Um, if the board wants to consider a ten thousand dollar, uh, in addition to the hundred and twelve.
Is that enough? How many trees were we doing?
Well, without the plants.
It's three lots with one existing.
Yeah, I, I'm trying to recall, I, there was, ten thousand should be enough, 'cause there was, there was a handful that were green trees along the main road.
So, so, forgive me.
Doesn't the one twelve cover this?
It, it doesn't, but.
I didn't see it in the, in Dave Varga's.
So the surety is to complete the, the lane.
Mm-hmm.
That, that doesn't include landscaping?
It does. It's the project as far as I'm aware.
It should be an item, a listed item.
Yeah.
Good item.
Yeah.
Right. And the sidewalks, all that.
Okay.
Pretty much everything else, I.
And they're all public planted, they're not private planted.
I mean, two-inch caliper, two-and-a-half inch caliper trees to plant, purchase, you know, max is probably five hundred, times six trees, unless the existing houses being.
And I, I'm just trying to recall though, I mean, I think there was some buffering trees too and whatnot, um.
They were, as I recall, they were on the outside, on the borderline of the parcel.
They were.
Yeah.
Um, well, I, I, I'm not concerned, personally, I'm not concerned about this applicant. They've, they've been great, I think, establishing ten thousand in addition to cover that is, is probably reasonable.
Okay.
I, I have a question about the computation, it's maybe an utterly stupid question, and I apologize. Yes, there, there are stupid questions, but the calculation as I see it is the cost of improvements plus the bond amount, less what comments, uh, completed to date. And what I don't understand is, um, the bond amount. Isn't that sort of counting it twice? You look at the cost of improvements and the bond amount, and that's, I'm just, uh, page three for stormwater management, just one example. If the cost of improvements is a thousand dollars, it's the net, the cost of improvements less what they've already done. What is the bound, bond amount?
It's the balance, two hundred and twenty-five dollars is the unit cost. Out of that, they only did eleven hundred and twenty-five dollars worth of improvement.
What are you, what are you looking at?
Right across.
Page one.
Eight.
Yeah, page one, okay. The one and the same, that's what I'm saying, isn't that counting it twice?
No, because.
It's counting it in, in what the cost of improvement is, plus the bond amount.
No.
The bond amount, wouldn't the b, bond amount be the amount that's, that's allocated for that?
The, the bond amount is what is put aside in case the, uh, developer doesn't fulfill their job, and so if it costs a thousand dollars for them to build that piece that you were looking at, stormwater.
Yeah.
And they fold or go under, then there's a thousand dollars in the bond to pay for it that the town has access to.
But, you, i, if, then, then why is that counted in the net?
In the hundred and twelve.
In the bond, in the to, a hundred and twelve.
Because it hasn't been completed yet.
But it's, but it's identified as a cost of improvement.
A cost to do it, but it hasn't been completed, then after cost of improvement, see where it says work completed to date?
Right. I would think that it would be the difference between those two figures, would be how much we would need insurity from them to complete the project, how much they say the cost is gonna be, and how much they've already incurred. The difference between those is the amount of money we need to make sure.
But then they use a base multiplier of two.
Use what?
They, but they, they use, then they multiply it by two, right? Whatever's.
Right.
Yeah. So, 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 so is that, is you're asking what the difference between, so the two forty-six minus the one ninety is the fifty-six thousand, and then we times it by two.
Say, the.
It's okay, it's bottom, bottom of the, um, on page three, uh, total one, two, three, four, five, one through nine is two forty-six for the cost of improvements.
Yeah.
Work completed to date is a hundred and ninety.
Yeah.
The difference is fifty-six thousand.
No. Oh, the difference is, is this.
Yeah, it's fifty-six thousand, then, then they do a multiplier of two, which is where they come up with a hundred and twelve thousand.
So they.
We double it, whatever we think is gonna cost.
Yeah, it's twenty-five percent more.
Fifty percent more.
I mean, it says, it says there in the, kind of the lower left corner, totals of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine.
Yeah.
Right, no, I, I, I understand where that line comes from. I don't understand the, the math of that fifty-six to ten.
It's actually, it's a double.
It's, it's being counted twice, it's being counted both in the cost of improvement and in this bond amount.
Yeah. But, but what he's saying in these spreadsheets, they completed to date a hundred and ninety-thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Of the two forty, and remaining work is fifty-six thousand two hundred and ten, and then the factor two, it's, it's a doubling, so it's twice as much, and that's the bond amount.
Okay.
So even if we were not going to include the trees, we have twice as much money, we'll have twice as much money insurity as it's anticipated to cost to complete.
That answers my question.
Good. Okay.
That answers my question, thank you.
All right. Um, so, uh, who, who made the motion?
Me.
You did, um, so we were gonna, um, maybe withdraw that motion, make a new one where, where modified by adding the additional.
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand?
Okay.
Withdraw your motion?
I withdraw my motion, original motion.
So recognized?
And, um, the motion should be ten thousand dollars more, which would bring you up to a hundred and.
Twenty-two thousand.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-two thousand.
Twenty-two thousand, thank you.
All right, second.
Second.
So a motion has been made and it's been seconded to approve the establishment of surety for the Palmer Lane three lot subdivision in the amount of a hundred and twenty-two thousand four hundred and twenty dollars, which shall be established in the form of a cash deposit made up to the town of Georgetown, Mass.
I have one more, uh.
Any discussion?
Yeah. I believe this should be a four lot subdivision, and it's written here as three, and I think if, that's important because with, um, well, after the vote, I have some discussion. Okay? All right.
Well, so, we're gonna vote on this though, that you want to amend?
All right.
Don't we wanna get this right the first time, if that's gonna, if that's the issue?
Okay.
Uh, since we're in discussion, i, is this a four lot subdivision, John?
Yeah.
Well, hey, we're starting to less, to try to clarify this.
Yep.
Yeah.
In effect, you have an existing house on the property that has its own frontage. That was allowed to be conveyed as a separate lot, um, and it's being rehabbed, it's being built while the road was being built. Now, the catch with this is the driveway for the existing house is going to come off of the new roadway.
Right.
All right? As will be the other three lots, but this particular lot that has the existing house has frontage, that's why they were allowed to continue on, so, you know, it's chicken and egg.
Is this rehab to kind of bring it up to code?
Yeah, but because of the.
Is that the objective really?
Yeah. I mean, i, it's a hybrid, i, it's a hybrid. They were able to, if I could just explain, they were able to pull a building permit to modify that building, and they were going to occupy that building, they were able to convey that building to a, a private, another private party, so that continued on while this subdivision roadway was being built. The lots were not allowed to be built on because they didn't have access, they didn't have constructed frontage. So it is a three lot subdivision, and it has another lot that was subdivided off of.
An existing dwelling.
Yeah, but.
So I, I, so I, in the big scheme of things, I'm not sure it really matters, but with that said, if you look at page one of nineteen.
For the calculation.
For the, uh, decision, it says the decision was a four lot subdivision made up of three new single-family residential house lots, so I think in the name of consistency, it would wanna say the same, it's a four lot subdivision, 'cause that's what the decision is.
All right, that's right, that's just me.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So, how about withdraw your motion again? And make a new one?
Okay. Oh, excuse me, I withdraw that motion?
So noted.
All right, I make a motion that we accept the, the hundred and twenty-two thousand dollar surety for a four lot subdivision for Palmer Lane.
And the amount?
I said a hundred and twenty-two, yeah, right.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and the second, and seconded to approve the establishment of a surety for the Palmer Lane four lot subdivision in the amount of a hundred and twenty-two thousand four hundred and twenty dollars, which shall be established in the form of a cash deposit made up to the town of Georgetown, Mass. Any, more discussion?
The only thing that I think we need to say is that it's, no, it's in, it's in accordance with, uh, Dave Varga's recommendation, plus ten thousand dollars to make sure that the trees are planted. We're, we're not just randomly throwing in another ten, ten grand.
Okay.
There's, there's reason, and we should stipulate the reason.
That's fine, so, uh, does anybody have any more before we withdraw this one for the third one time?
Fourth.
All right, I'm gonna withdraw, but Bob, you're gonna make the motion now.
Okay, so, the withdrawal has been made and noted.
I move to approve the establishment of surety for the Palmer Lane four lot subdivision in the amount of a hundred and twenty-two thousand four hundred and twenty dollars, which will be established in the form of a cash deposit made up to the town of Georgetown, Mass. Said some has been recommended by the town inspecting engineer, David Varga, for further reference, has said, "Some please refer to the said engineer's three-page spreadsheet attached here with dated June 21st, 2017, entitled Palmer Lane Georgetown Estimate of Remain." Dated June twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, and entitled Palmer Lane Georgetown Estimate of Remaining Work. Plus ten thousand dollars surety for the planting of trees.
Oh, I can second that one.
So. Just for discussion purposes.
So a motion has been made and it has been seconded to approve the establishment of a surety for Palmer Lane four lot subdivision in the amount of a hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars. Which includes an additional ten thousand dollar surety for, for plant material.
I'm just, I'm just going back to the decision, I, I, I have no problem asking for another ten thousand for the trees. I think the reason Dave Varga didn't specifically add that in, if you look at, uh, on the decision, page twelve. Letter I, of the thing specified of why there might be a security, the landscaping is not included in that list. It does however say shall consider, but shall not be limited to the following.
Street tees, there are street tees listed.
Yes, sight screening and street tees.
Okay, all right, fine, I.
Good point, good point.
No, it was actually a bad point.
Not at your honor, cross the T.
Very good.
Okay, uh, any more discussion? No more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four yes, one abstain.
Mr. Chairman, I do have some discussion about Palmer Lane, but for other things.
Um, yeah, uh, I suppose since we're on that, um, little bit, uh, not, not too much, though, but.
Okay, on.
Mr. Chairman, could we just change that to, uh, instead of abstain, could we just mark that as recused?
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you. Please, recuse, thanks, Eric.
Sorry, Tony.
Uh, if you will look on page, um, fifteen of nineteen. On the decision.
Are we still talking Palmer?
No.
Sorry.
Okay.
Yes.
No. Yes, I'm gonna be there, hold on, I did so much notes here today. Uh, where, where it has the listing of the roof size of the buildings, which I've never seen that before. And I don't remember any discussion about it. It's on page seven of nineteen. And it has listed on the bottom. It says there, uh, eighteen hundred square feet for the roof. And on the next page, it goes on each of the lots, each roof is supposed to be eighteen hundred square feet. Okay? Are we, are we all there?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Now, the one building that has the addition to it with the historical home. Has a total, if you add those two roofs together, the original and the addition, has twenty-seven hundred and thirty-nine square feet. Now, my question, and I communicated with Les, who's, who, John said is still looking at it. I'd like to know what, what can we do about this? That, that project has been bothering me every time I drive by it. At first, I thought, well, maybe it's too high, that's what's bothered me, when it was going out for the addition, maybe it's too high. But then, when I got this decision, and I started really going through it, I said, oh my God. It's supposed to be the same size as all the houses in there? So what I did is called Les up and I says, well, what kind of a permit did he get for that roof size? And this is what he told me. Now, he said, which is, which is nine hundred and thirty-nine square feet more than eighteen hundred. So you're talking fifty percent more of a roof. On that, the total together project. But he said, if you took off, he had two structures on there, uh, shed and a garage, which were demolished. Which I don't know what that permit looked like, but that was toward down. If you decrease that from twenty-seven hundred and thirty-nine. It comes close, but it isn't exact to eighteen hundred.
John, do you know, do you have any, anything you want to add to this?
No, I did talk to Les about this, um, because he relayed to me this morning that, um, Tilly had inquired about this particular issue. He did go over with me, the other, the other buildings, yeah, the other buildings that were raised. So that it was a, what he was considering at this point, a wash, but he hasn't gone through the actual ca- calculation.
Yeah.
Um, of how big this roof is, um, with the addition to that house.
So, so he, he's going to do that?
Yeah.
So we'll wait till we get that piece of information?
Yeah.
Before we can move forward.
May very well be a violation of, of that, but it hasn't been, it's actually determined.
If there's a mistake in my, in my mind, if there's a mistake, they happen. But the developer is the responsible party. And, and I don't have any mercy on that, if this is in fact, valid.
Tilly, can I just ask you a question? So the, there's a, there's a asterisk next to the lot fifteen.
Right.
And it says, uh, this guidance is provided in the event that the existing dwelling on lot fifteen is raised requiring a rebuild.
Right. It's not.
Is that, is that what took, that is not what took place, though, correct?
It's not raised.
It was not raised.
They went to a demolition delay process.
So, the way I interpret that, then, and maybe I'm misinterpreting this, is that that only takes, that, uh. That eighteen hundred square feet only comes into play if that building is raised and rebuilt.
Yeah.
And so I don't think that there is a limitation on it if it's not raised, is the way I read this.
In other words, that eighteen hundred would be for the replacement of that building.
For the replacement, but does not apply to the.
This building was not raised.
Correct.
Right, right.
Right.
So what you're saying is that the addition could be more, but the raised building could not?
That, I think that's how I interpret this, yes, I think that's a reasonable interpretation of words.
Does that make any sense to you? The intent.
Well. I, I think the, the intent, though, is to limit the amount of impervious roofing. And this is an existing structure that had additional roofing put on. But the net, because of the removal of the other two buildings, the net is pretty much what the originals sum total was.
And, and this is where a philosophical difference perhaps, but I don't read, I, I don't worry, I'm not so concerned about intent, I'm, I'm concerned about what it actually says.
Yeah.
Because intent isn't gonna buy us much in a, in a court. You know, when we go to, say, they, they overbuilt, you know, we need to have it raised and, and taken down. They're gonna say, well, what does it say? And to, to my reading of this, it, there's no limitation on the size if there's.
Discussions with Les, did he comment in the way that, that?
No, no, but I mean, to me, what you're saying is totally reasonable, and, and still, I'm joining company here. So, you know, this, this project was being built, who knows what, the first time I really looked at this decision was in preparation for this meeting.
So could we, would, would the board be comfortable with this? Could, could you just have a conversation again with Les and, and just say, you know, this issue has been brought up, what Matt just brought up? You know, please evaluate either or, it's been raised or it hasn't. And if it has, hasn't been raised, you know, please respond to the concern that the, to close the loop.
And, and just throwing one other piece out there, I know that the developer wasn't thrilled about keeping the existing building there, that was a, a concession to the historical society. And so to say that there may have been some offset and perhaps allowing a little bit bigger building there in exchange for making the concession to the historical society, I, I, I don't know that that was all thought out that way. But I think that's a reasonable way to have interpreted this.
Well, the historical commission is not happy with that project, that building. Absolutely not, and I have had many other people besides that's on the commission are not happy with that.
Well, they'd have, they'd need to let us know if it, if they're in violation of any agreement that they had, I, I would think.
Yeah, I don't know if they did have one.
Otherwise, otherwise.
Yeah.
You know, unfortunately, a lot of this stuff is lessons learned.
Yeah.
If there's a will, there's a way.
Right.
As Matt's pointing out, you know, that, that asterisk is specific. If that building's, it was raised and is limited.
Right.
Doesn't say anything if it stays, what's limited.
Right.
So it's a loophole.
But it doesn't say.
You can only learn from.
It's a loophole, if you.
But it doesn't, it doesn't really, based on Matt's comment, reading the note, it doesn't say the other way either. It doesn't say what it should be.
Right.
But however, when you, when you, when they made it a point of putting, by the way, I never saw this, uh, roof heights, have you, and subdivisions?
I've seen it, I have seen it, but it's been a long time since I've seen it.
Yeah, I, I, this is my first time seeing it, and I, I don't even remember a discussion about it. I thought absolutely that, that, uh, the zoning issue was the building inspector, and that we'd never put it in the subdivision requirement.
So is it my, am I remembering this one right, that Larry wrote this one for us, Larry Graham?
It could be, maybe.
And I think he probably included things that we wouldn't have necessarily otherwise thought of, 'cause he's, you know, fresh eyes and doing it from a different template or something, but.
Maybe that would be a contact for you to find out, you know, exactly what that asterisk meant, when he did it.
Well, I think in the end of this, doesn't this pour down to Les is reading this?
True.
Yep.
So.
True.
You know, I.
And I don't.
Just so we can move on.
I don't think we stipulated a- at all.
Do you remember conversations about it? I don't either.
No, but I was gonna say that I think that usually that kind of thing with an existing dwelling has to do with the footprint. The footprint has to remain the same.
Yes.
But apparently, it was extended. Now, is, is that something that should have been brought before the planning board? Their intention to expand the footprint in this four lot subdivision?
Well, perhaps in hindsight, but.
Perhaps that's the lesson learned, is if, if there's gonna be an expansion of a lot, and one dwelling is gonna remain.
I, I, I don't re- I don't recall the agreement that they had with, uh, the historic commission for, for what they were gonna do with that, exactly how they were gonna treat it. But, um, all I know is this is what we've got in front of us, this is the written record.
Yeah.
And again, you know, let's, let's, let's respond and get back to what we know, we interpret these distributions.
And, and the, and the, one more comment that, um, I think we, we kind of missed out on is the housing balance by law. They have to, uh, John, they have to, uh, meet the requirement of a special permit. Anything over three lots, three or more lots is a way of thread. You have to contribute to the, uh, affordable housing requirement. And there's nothing like that, and, and he, nothing in the minutes saying that they went to, to have a meeting with the trust, or, or nothing like that.
Wasn't there, wasn't there a lot of discussion, which goes back to this definition of four lot subdivision made up of three new single-family residential houses? For some reason, I seem to recall the developer talking about that. And that because it was only three new houses, it was not, didn't fall under that?
Well, that's about, the bylaw says three or more. Yeah, I think it's by law fifty-eight, one, um.
Is that something?
So, i- i- there seems to be a page missing from the decision. Uh, in page five, it seems to be missing. 'Cause I, I, I'm fairly confident there was a affordable housing contribution aspect of this development, I'm fairly certain there is.
Well, it's not supposed to be as the last, last step. Now, it.
So we, it should be. Want me to go get, uh, that page five?
I, I don't know that we need to resolve it right now.
Yeah.
'Cause it is it or isn't, but, but I, that, that may be where it is.
Can we, can we have that issue also, have John resolve the, uh, the affordable housing?
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Page five. And the slash affordable housing issue.
Yeah.
And then, um, Les. Reading on the, uh, coverage.
I, I, you know, I do, I know it exists because, um, uh, Larry actually had me write it, um.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, now I remember that, right. All right.
Uh, uh, he, yeah.
When is I going to come up with, pay it, actually pay it, you know, can't remember that? You gotta give the good one.
I'm stretching my, my, my limits of my memory to remember that I did it, um, what I actually said in it, I don't.
Do you remember how much you figured it to be? Or is that based on the average of the sale price?
I think it's based on the average of the sale price, but.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, was there any?
Those are my two moments.
All right, so, uh, we added that in the sureties, um, I'm sorry?
I, we just can't authorize you to take the money.
Oh, thank you, right, and there was one more motion there that, um.
I move to authorize the planning board chair, if I may.
Please.
Uh, upon receipt of the, uh, subject cash deposit surety to endorse Form I, performance bond deposit of money. And Form K, partial release of covenant, that is without further action by the planning board.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded to authorize the planning board chair upon receipt of the subject cash deposit surety to endorse Form I, performance bond deposit of money. And Form K, partial release of covenants, i.e. without further action by the planning board, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Recused, Mr. Chairman?
Four yes, one recused.
Can I say recused if I'm recused?
It's a meta-question, I think.
Okay, moving on, uh, to our public hearing. Special permit application.
This question is my mind, I, I can't.
Uh, if I could get a motion to open the.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
If, um, if it's appropriate?
If I could just tell you guys, um, there is a supplemental, um, comments report from the original one. Is that what you're gonna make reference to?
No, I was, I was going to open the continuation of sixty-six Parish Road, special permit application for OSRD.
Second.
Motion has been made and it's been seconded to open the continued, uh, public hearing for sixty-six Parish Road, special permit, OSRD. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And unless there's any discussion beforehand, I'll read the motion to move, continue.
I do have, yeah, 'cause there is, there are two, uh, reports for tonight. And, um, one is subsequent, having talked to the, um, attorney, after talking with the project engineer. And the attorney would like this board, uh, to consider extending this, the review, till the September meeting. They are willing to submit a new application, um, for this development. After they come back and discuss with the planning board, what they're now planning to do. And I, I was explaining this earlier this evening. They're no longer looking at subdividing the property into separate individual lots. They're talking about putting all of the dwellings, and they would be single-family dwellings, on the, on the property, on one lot. They're trying to stay away from any involvement with the wetlands whatsoever. So it's a new project, Les is trying to make a zoning determination based on the existing language of the OSRD. And other sections of the zoning ordinance, so that he's spot on when he makes this decision. So the board will know exactly what permits are going to be needed for this. Because it's, it's contradictory, I don't know if we're gonna be able to get to this tonight, but the OSRD, uh, does state, in, in the case of condominiums. And are these single-family homes on one lot considered condominiums? Condominiums are not defined in the zoning ordinance, they're not, they're not an allowed use in the table of uses, they're not listed as an allowed use yet. The OSRD provides for condominiums, and the provision that the zoning board is the permitting authority. Even though other language of the OSRD says that the planning board is the permitting authority, the, the supreme permitting authority for all OSRD developments.
Multi-family.
So.
Yeah.
Not condos, not individual.
So, with that said, thank, was there anything else?
No, so ultimately, they just wanna come back, uh, in September, go over this new proposal. And, um, once the boards take comfortable with their description of it. And the board makes a decision to come in with a new application, as we spoke about at the last meeting, they're very much willing to do that. I did convey to them what the board, um, stated at the last meeting. That the application fee itself would be waived. The advertising would have to be paid for. The advertising would have to be paid for, the peer review would have to be paid for, but the application fee would be waived. Taking into consideration, we never really took any actual, real action on the previous application. Other than continuing from one meeting to the next.
So I, I, I guess I'm just dense, but I don't understand the point of them coming in to talk about what they're going to do. Why not just have them do it?
Yeah.
It, it, it's, it's another pre-application because it's so different than what was previously.
Right, but so I guess I don't understand how we can hold that meeting under the office, o- auspices of. Never get to use that word, of, uh, of, of this particular application. Wouldn't it be better to close out this current application, have them come in for a pre-application meeting if that's what they wanna do? And then, so that way we can advertise it properly, put it in the, 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 everything properly.
Their only objection to that is that they would be willing to continue with the already submitted application. If the planning board does not like what they're proposing. They've given us extensions. So we, we do have an extension right now for the existing application through December thirty first of this year. So they've already submitted more than four minutes. So that'll give us, should give us plenty of time. But you see what, they don't wanna pull, pull the existing one until.
And then start the whole process again.
So if we don't, if we don't find out. So what they're saying is they're, in a sense, putting two ideas on the table.
Well, they're keeping one viable that's still on the table.
Correct.
And trying to supplant that with, um, this new proposal. And if the board is amenable to the new proposal, then they'll start the process of a new application and withdraw the existing one. It's just they're covering the bases.
I, I don't have any objection. That's, that's their strategy and.
I, I agree with Matt though. I think you, they ought to withdraw without prejudice. Uh, you hang, you hang on to subdivisions for, for that. We don't know between their coming in in September and our full town meeting, let's say, just for explanation. And that we get a citizen petition to change something, you know, the zoning issue or something. They'll be protected because they had it in before that change. And that's the whole purpose, as I think, for them to move along with their projects. That we really shouldn't continue as much as we are, I think, because of that one reason. Things can change. We can change the subdivision. We can find a problem. Uh, that, you know, later on with another project or theirs, that isn't, uh, you know.
I mean, that's.
Great for the town. Um, and.
Harry, you wanted to?
I don't wanna muddy the waters here. I just wanna, um, um, rewind the tape just a little bit here. My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, there was only one other hearing that opened. There was one instance. And I was not here for that. I'll need to have a, um, a Mullins form. I don't know if anybody else has missed, but, um, I have a little bit of a concern that now if I miss another. We're gone. And the other concern I have is, um, I wasn't here. I don't really know what was presented to the abutters, but I don't see any abutters here tonight. And this is the contin- this is the continuation night, which leads me to think that whatever was presented that night. The abutters don't have a problem with, but now we're being asked to accept something that's different. And they're not here. And that's kinda like a bait and switch thing to me. I, I'd be upset.
I agree with that. And, and also, how do, what, what kind of assurances could we possibly give them at this next meeting? That this is okay, that they would feel comfortable dropping this, that they're not comfortable dropping it now. Uh, in a, without a, without possi- without do, noticing it properly, without, uh, doing all those things. I, I just don't like it.
I, I am con- I'm conjecturing, but I, I, I'm guessing that, um, they just don't wanna have to restart the process. For their advantage of time. It's gonna take more time to get it going again. I, from the board's perspective, I think we, it would, it's, what would be much better for the board? If they did the presentation again, because Harry hasn't seen it.
Oh, I, I can certainly watch it. That's not an issue.
His issue is that he's missed a meeting.
There's a risk, I understand. There's a risk if something happens. That.
Just for general, just a general question. Wa- was yield determined?
No.
Yield was not determined?
No, no, I remember.
Oh, okay, so.
No, they, they just.
It was just a presentation.
Yeah. We didn't send anything to Larry, did we?
No.
I don't think so. Nobody has, you know, that's our, usually our process.
Yeah.
It was OSRD concept?
I was, I was just gonna add, you know, reading through this file on how many years they've actually been involved with trying to plan for this. Um, you, you know, probably staying on a more proactive, um, you know, user friendly approach. They're, they're respectfully asking for an extension till our first meeting in September to come in. We haven't seen them since.
Yeah.
I think March, you know.
Wow.
March fourteenth.
You know, they've pretty much stopped reviewing the development of that property. That involves a wetland crossing or a wetland impact. So they've, they've been, you know, getting the message conservation wise that they're going to be limited to developing. That portion of the property, um, right off of Parish Road. And, you know, this is, this is, it's a completely different project now. They realize, the project engineer and the applicant's attorney, um, realize that, um, they have to submit a new application. But they don't want to, at this point in time, abandon completely what has been submitted. And, you know, has been reviewed. You know, because who knows what's going to happen? I think this, this new proposal is a lot less impacting on the environment. It achieves the goal of preserving, um, the, the green area, the, the wet area of this property. Has so much value relative to the environmental issues. So this, they're doing everything they can to condense and still have a viable project. So, you know, in my opinion, it's not gonna hurt the planning board to listen to what they have to say anew. And, um, you know, the board at the next meeting when they do come in, um, can, you'll have, you'll have more information about the project. What they now wanna propose. And we'll probably, at that one meeting, be able to decide in working with them for them to withdraw that plan. In a friendly format and then, uh, begin anew, um, with a new submission of an application for that project. And see where that goes.
So they don't have to go to conservation with the new project?
That's, that's what it's looking like. You know, they're, they're outside of the buffer. They're not crossing.
I understand that, but what about the, there's a, there's a, there's a stream or, um, uh, ditch. Along Parish Road in Byfield that they have to cross to have access, whatever they want.
I mean, environmentally, they have to prove that.
So they have to go to the ConCom is my point. And the Con.
I, I, I think, I think they, they intend, they will do that and do what they have to do there. What they're saying is they're going to housing out of it. With crossing, they have to do what they have to do and they'll go to conservation commission for that, but they wanna pull the development part of it out of there. So they're not having any of those issues. It's, I don't think what John's saying is that they're saying.
Okay, I, I just want.
Yeah, they have pulled that aspect working with them.
Right.
Well, uh, so the draft motion is about the extension, right?
Yep.
Or someone can make another motion. Harry, do you have a feeling one way or the other?
I just, I think I. I just have a question to ask. Um, the applicants aren't here tonight, but I was under the impression, or it seemed like from the notes that you were under the impression they would be. Something changed quickly or?
The project engineer last week was under the impression they were gonna be here.
Yeah.
He had a conversation with the applicant's attorney. And she requested, she called up and requested that, um, we defer further review of this until the September meeting. That, so that was a formal request by the, the applicant's attorney. And it was different from the project engineer, but they were not on the same page. They hadn't communicated with one another. So, you know, the project engineer was telling me, we'll be there and go forward with putting it on the agenda. Two days later, I got a call from the attorney and, um, was being requested to, uh, continue the, the whole affair. And it's, it's really being held up at this point in time because they're trying to get a zoning determination. You know, are they going to be able to apply for what they wanna do without involving the zoning board of adjustment? That's the big question that they're trying to deal with. That's another reason why they don't wanna withdraw.
With all due. With all due respect, how does that affect us? I mean, we, from, well, from my point of view, I mean. We, we are presented with an application for X, Y, Z. We approve, we deny, we modify, we come to some kind of a, a decision. The fact that the applicant also has to go to the board of health, the conservation. That board, maybe historic. That, it, it's not that that's irrelevant, but it is in addition to what we have to do.
You know what, you know what hap- what happened in this state and it happens in a lot of states? The housing developers, the commercial developers lobby the legislatures, right? And they change the laws around. And what they do, they take out the logic of deferring process. Now, the logic of development is that if you have wetlands that have to be handled. The permit granting authority in Massachusetts for wetland crossing is a conservation commission, a local conservation commission, state agency. You really have to get the wetland issues under control and planned for and permitted for. Before you'll know where the roadway's gonna go, before you know where the lots are going to be, how many of the lots. So that's the logic of it. So, you know, that's where they should start. Developers should start there and once they're completed with that process, then they move forward with their plans, all the roadway and the lots. We, we have that jurisdiction, the planning board has that jurisdiction. If there are any variances involved with zoning, they should really go to the ZBA too, before they come to the planning board. But they can go any which way they want. They can hit it at all fronts. None of it makes any sense. Why? Because the developers know. That if they can confuse local jurisdictions and, and, you know, apply in multiple permitting processes at the same time. You know, it just makes for a, a real confusing situation for local, um, boards to deal with. That's.
I recommend we put that.
Upper endos.
I.
I'm not being disparaging of that group. They wanna make money. That's what they're in the business for. But you know what? There could be better laws, more organized laws that make a lot better sense. Relative to the logical process for getting local permits. And it's not in place. And I, I'd like to ask Rob, you know, am I making sense in what I'm?
I, I, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah. But, you know, politics being what it is, it is what it is.
We should, we should, you know, when we get to the subdivision regs, in my opinion, we should put it in that they go to the conservation if it's required first.
You can't supersede what state statutes provide for.
Well, unfortunately, when I, when reviewing, Indover has it in theirs. Now, you know, they're not a stinky winky community. They're, they've got a complete staff. And they have it on, in theirs.
Yeah.
So. First step, go to the conservation if you, it's required.
So that, I, I, maybe you could scribble that down on a piece of paper and if that's one of your first one, you're gonna.
You got it.
Alright, good. But so, so it brings us though back to what we have, you know, in front of us.
May I ask, Mr. Chairman, that, there, there's a, a motion that was prepared here. It says, I move to accept the applicant's request to withdraw without prejudice. Is that request not, i- is that request now superseded by the attorney? This came from the engineer?
Particular staff report.
Right, that was the engineer.
On the table.
Okay.
Superseding the project engineer is the applicant's attorney.
Attorney. Which is the draft motion that you hand out tonight.
And that's what they're requesting us to do, not the withdrawal. The applicant is requesting us to do the supplementary, which is on the handout.
The, the only question I did, I wanna ask for my, uh, for clarity is, so they, they're expecting to come in September and get direction from the board. If we are in agreement with this new idea to pursue or not.
Yes.
And they're assuming that they will have Les's determination prior to coming.
Yes, exactly.
So it's possible that Les could give them a negative determination and they would withdraw that idea in its entirety.
In all likelihood, yes.
That's what they would do.
Knowing that they probably wouldn't see the variance that they need.
For the multi-family.
I think both, I, I guess for me, I, I think Matt's concerns are legit and I see the developers' concerns as legit also. Um, I guess just for myself, I think taping this draft motion that was submitted tonight, I'm okay with. But that's just me, how, you know, it's up to the rest of the board, what you guys wanna do, how you guys wanna.
So I, I could feel giving them leeway, but, I mean, I guess my, my request would be that we make it very clear to them that. You know, this is their one, their one shot here. Uh, we, I think we've, I think this is why we continued it the last time, frankly. And, uh, you know, our patience is, is why then.
Really good.
Yeah. Is that a good compromise that we can, we can all live with?
Well, I, I just, I'm just, I'm just, a, a little bit, I'm not understanding why we aren't here tonight. Dealing with all the other things that we have to deal with. I mean, we haven't established yield. We haven't looked at anything yet. I mean, it seems as though that not moving forward with it. I mean, it's, it's great to have alternative ideas in case one doesn't fly, but we still have to establish yield.
Yeah, we still have to go through all that.
And why aren't we doing that tonight? This is the continuation of the hearing.
Because they have this new idea that they're waiting to find out what Les's, uh, interpretation is going to be for this condominium thing.
With all due respect, I see how it's, it's relevant. You still have to establish a yield to figure out how many houses.
I couldn't agree with you more, but my, my one thing is, I, I'm taking this as a, a courtesy request for a continuance.
That's what I'm taking it as.
If the, the lawyer wasn't available or the developer wasn't available, was in another location. And they said, I'm sorry, we can't make it tonight, we, we would generally honor that request, right?
I understand, okay. Taking it that way. Yes, I can, I can live with the taken.
I'm taking this as a, as a courtesy request for a continuance, um, that, um, you know, are, are in. And I, I would suggest in our motion that we make it very clear that this, we might not be so courteous the next time that this was requested. Unless they have some definitive reason why they're asking for it.
You can put that in the motion if you want.
I think John can extend that information.
If I could, it's just one short paragraph. This is what Les is trying to determine. Um, and this is in the OSRD. It's subsection, uh, D. Land division. To be eligible for consideration as an OSRD, the tract may be a subdivision. Or a division of land pursuant to Mass General Law forty one eighty one P. Divided however, that the OSRD may also be permitted where intended. As a condominium on land not so divided or subdivided.
That's terrible. That's really awfully.
Now, it just goes on one more.
Double talk.
Condominiums are permitted only with a special permit from the zoning board of appeals.
Scratch.
And site plan review from the planning board in all roadways within shall remain private.
That's the.
Yeah, isn't there some, somewhere in our ordinance that the definitions define what a condominium is versus a single family?
No.
No?
No, and in the table of uses, the loud table of uses, there's no condominium.
Well, you know how we can avoid that, is my thought.
It's from the, the zoning board of appeals can only in one of the, one of the, what is it, the RB?
Now, now, just one, just the, now the second, the next se- in the next paragraph. Now, now, just one, just the, now, the second, the next, in the next paragraph, subsection 16549, to make it even more confusing, it reads, "The planning board may authorize an OSRD pursuant to the grant of a special permit. The planning board will act as the special permit granting authority for all OSRD applications. Such special permits may be acted on, acted upon in accordance with the following provisions outlined in this bylaw." So the first paragraph says that the condominiums would be permitted by the zoning board, but in the next paragraph, it says, "All OSRDs are under the jurisdiction of permit granting authority being the planning board."
Say that, yeah. So, so there's a lot of discussion in that that we can have, and I have a lot of thoughts about that, but I don't think now's the time to get into it.
Yeah, but that's what less is grabbing.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to defer further review of the OSRD definitive subdivision plan application for 66 Parish Road, map 20 lot 1, date specifics of the 13th of September 2017, planning board meeting. This extension request is reflected in the most recently submitted Form H, signed by the applicant on July 7th with the extension good through the 31st of December 2017, providing that the applicant understand that this is a one-time courtesy extension. Can I read?
Second.
Provided that the applicant understand that this is a one-time courtesy extension. I'm sure John will make that.
Okay. So, and you seconded it, Matt?
Yes.
So the motion has been made and it's been seconded to defer further review of the OSRD definitive subdivision plan application for 66 Parish Road, map 20 lot 1, date specifics of the 13th of September 2017, planning board meeting. This extension request is reflected in the most recently submitted Form H, signed by the applicant on seven, July 17th, with the extension good through 31 December 2017, which provide, provides the applicant-
Provided.
Provided-
That the applicant-
That the applicant understands this is a one-time courtesy extension. Uh, okay, any discussion? No discussion in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that was unanimous. Is, was that form-
Mr. Chairman, I-
Of the works, you ever sign that form? Um, the clerk of the planning board-
I'd like to make a motion to accept the Form H from 66 Parish Road.
Yeah, just, just one second, please.
Um, that's, that'll be ex, right now, be ex-
Okay. So Bob will sign that, okay.
And I'd like to make a motion to accept Form H, request for extension for 66 Parish Road, to, good till December 31st, 2017.
Why are we making a motion for that? Do we need to?
I don't believe we've ever accepted this.
That's the quarterly thing that we've been doing, I guess.
Yeah, I don't believe we've accepted this one yet.
We've been doing quarterly, seven years.
Hmm?
Yeah, but I, I didn't know, okay.
Do you have stream to-
I know, I know the quarterly ones, I didn't know we needed that. I thought we just in this motion accepted the Form H.
Did, was that part of it?
Recently submitted Form H.
This extension is reflected. Yeah, we, we always, I don't know, we always did the Form H extension requests as a separate motion, like-
Go, go ahead.
Cool, if we're good with it, we're good with it.
I, I, I think-
All I care about is he signed it.
I think it's already, I think it's already in there. The Form H is already-
He signed it, that's all.
Okay.
All paperwork's done.
All right, thumbs up.
Cool.
So that takes care of, if you want to, that meeting has been now continued with that draft motion. Okay, so now we're gonna go to the planning office. Wait, was there one other thing? There was another discussion point.
Seems like a classic question.
Respondence, it was Levin Martel Way, right?
Yes.
Do you want to talk about that? That was a handout tonight, everyone. Let's hand out the Levin Martel Way. John, you wanna?
Uh, yes. Again, this is attorney Nancy McCann, same attorney, Parish Road. Levin Martel Way, paying to this planning board last year, and the site has had porous pavement for, I believe, the last 12 years, I think 12 to 15 years. And when Mr. Salter came in for a modification of use last year, it was one of the review items that the porous pavement was no longer porous because it wasn't properly maintained. And what Ms. McCann would like for this board to do is grant an extension for the review of this matter to take place on the planning board's September 13th meeting. And that's for the applicant to come in with a remediation plan, or whatever the plan is to correct the porous pavement. Whether they're going to have to take that up and put in impervious pavement with the drain system, or if they've come up with a plan that will properly mitigate the present impervious nature of the porous pavement. And what's also involved with this, and this is involved with the, it's documented in the proposed draft motion, that Ms. McCann is the escrow agent for the $50,000 surety that is in place relative to correcting the situation with the pavement. This i- is an item that came before me pri- right prior to the meeting. It came this week. So it wasn't something that you could put on to the agenda as an advertised item, but rather as a, a request just to defer so they can come in at the first meeting in September. And they have also granted an extension for the review of this, and that was through September 30th.
Can you run through this developing on the agenda?
Because it's an extension request and the, and the dates that are involved, they were supposed to come in here with a plan, a remediation plan, and that was set to expire.
Yeah.
So they're requesting, formally requesting a writing that the board-
Remember, they came in, they said it was too snowy and too cold, we can't vacuum, we can't fix it, we have to wait, and we said, "Well, give it till July to fix it then, hopefully the snow will be gone by then." It sounded like, uh-
And they tried to fix it, and it fixed and worked?
Well, depends if it was ever installed correctly or not.
Yeah.
But nobody's watching.
You know, just the basic conversation I had with the attorney, Meridian Engineering just hasn't been able to figure out how they're going to correct the problem. They've tried vacuuming it, and it's not working. And they may end up having to put a drain system in, in putting standard pavement down.
Well, you could, you could, you could peel up all the pavement and then dig down according to our sketch, our porous pavement detail, install it the right way, and then put the pavement back over it, as it was supposed to have been done initially.
Yeah. That's probably the least expensive way. Because if they have to tear it all up and, and then, you know-
Turn it over.
Stormwater, they may not have enough room for the stormwater, and that's why they put the porous down in the first place.
Yeah, and they'll have to go before the concrete to do it, and-
They did explain to me is that it was a less expensive way to handle stormwater. The, the infiltration system, the treatment of the stormwater for the parking lot would have been more expensive, so they went this way. And this dating back 12 years, this was, that was at the forefront of-
I know.
-porous pavement. Probably one of the earliest communities to allow for that. Works great in other parts of the country, it doesn't really work that well in New Hampshire.
It, it-
Yeah, they, there's certain places that allow it, but no one's really wants it.
What, my experience with it is that it, it hasn't been in place long enough for an accurate assessment. They, they, they just don't, they don't really know, 'cause there's so many variables involved in its construction and how these people are putting this stuff together, even though the drawings may say something. So it's, they're still trying to figure this out, I think.
My question would be-
Ever driven on 128? Find out that it's very successful.
Did you, did you actually see proof that they have this escrow account?
You know, 10, 15 years.
Do you have that in file?
What's that?
Do you have proof that there is $50,000 in an escrow account? Did they show you a deposit or a statement?
Yeah, we gotta check, yeah. Copy of a check or something.
You get the check?
Yeah. I, I think you don't, yeah, no, I don't, I don't want to get into discussing the project.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a motion?
Yeah, please.
Mr. Chairman, I go, I move to grant the Levin Martel Way extension request for up to and including 30 September 2017 regarding the remediation of porous pavement on said commercial property and the associated $50,000 bond held in regard to the same by the applicant's attorney Nancy McMahon Esquire. Further, this matter shall next be reviewed at the 13th September 2017 planning board meeting.
Second. So a motion has been made and some seconded, move to grant the Levin Martel Way extension request for up to and including 30 September 2017. I read remediation of the porous pavement on said commercial property and the associated $50,000 bond held in regard to same by the applicant's attorney Nancy McCann Esquire. Further, this attorney shall next be reviewed, this matter shall next be reviewed at the 13th September 2017 planning board meeting. Any discussion? No discussion in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So-
I have a quick thing before you have to leave, is that okay?
Uh, the only thing next on the agenda, correct me if I'm wrong, is the, is the planning office. Yes, right? Okay, so, yeah, right ahead.
Um, I was talking with the historical commission, and I just wanted you guys' opinion, I'm doing this on my own. And I was encouraging them to, and she said there is interest, to increase the six-month demolition delay to 18 months. They, they need time to, to do their thing and maybe get, get more of a handle on the process.
Numerous communities have done that.
Right. And so I, I was wondering if there would be support, 'cause I'm, she has me lined up on the 18th, I think, is their meeting. And like that, I was, what do you mean I'm on the meeting?
I, I would support that.
The, the painful part about it is that the idea of a demo delay is really good, if, if it's adequate, but-
Yeah.
Let's just say a savvy developer realizes that they're probably gonna be looking at eight months to a year to get through conservation, planning, everything else, so before they even file with us, they just file their demo delay.
Yeah.
The hearing goes through, regardless of whether it's gonna be saved or not gonna be saved, it's only a delay.
Would this board be-
They laid out the six months.
I'd be in support of that 18 months. Would you guys be in support of that?
I'd be in favor of it.
Matt?
No, I would not be.
You would not be?
No, you don't like that. I'm libertarian, we got on this board.
Yeah.
So, so, um, so you, you have, you know, an unofficial straw vote of four support, you want to know?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, I will-
All right. John, what, what was this?
Yeah, thanks for the, yeah, thanks for the-
What was this from?
John Eichman, maybe we'll talk about it next time, but it was, I seem to recall, this is what I requested.
Yes, yeah, and, um-
Okay.
If you, if you wanted to, just quickly, any preceding-
Just had another additional item that was-
Any preceding vote of the planning board on a special permit that requires a supermajority. Any preceding vote only needs a majority. He said, he states in his one paragraph there that he doesn't know of any law that would require a supermajority for, you know, secondary votes on a special permit that would require final action of four, of five members, minimal, or four of four.
But is he directing us anywhere?
Okay.
In other words, it's up to whatever we want to do?
No, what, what, we had a question, you know, does it take a supermajority on every motion that's taken on a special permit? And what he is stating clearly, in my mind, is that it does not. But he also cautions that, you know, if you're taking votes and you're only getting, you know, three out of four, or three out of five, you know, and waivers and whatnot, that you may be, may want to consider talking about it more so that, you know, you're actually getting four out of five, or five out of five votes.
Ultimately, anyone frustrated by the fact that they were outvoted with only a simple majority has the eventual ability to vote no to deny the permit. It's a special permit. You don't even need a reason to deny a special permit. You just vote no.
Yes, you do.
You can figure it out.
No, you, of course you do.
The board does.
Didn't we end up in court on that very-
The board does. The board needs a reason. Individual members don't need a reason to vote no.
Whenever you vote no, you should have a reason to coincide with it. The yeses, you don't need explanations, it's the no's.
I have to disagree with that, so you don't, you're not required to.
We're gonna end up in court again if you do that, so please don't.
Well, every time you deny it, you're end up in court, that's the only legal means of redress.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
So, okay, so we've got, uh-
It's appeal.
How do you, how do you want to start? So I have to leave, but you guys don't.
Good timing, yeah. That was very, very good, Mr. Chairman.
I've got a couple minutes, eight minutes.
Yeah.
In all seriousness, you know, you guys can keep going at, talking about this if you want, but I, I'm gonna hang for a little bit. John, can you introduce this?
Yeah. It, you know, only being here from February, but I, I believe this is probably the number one ordinance that we should tackle as a planning board to straighten out. The reason for that is that OSRD is the way to go for developers. It lessens the cost of roadway construction, it condenses, you know, that particular development. Any developer looks at that and they're gonna save money if they're able to get through the OSRD process. The problem with the OSRD, anybody that tries to read it and understand it, you know, their head starts spinning and it may start, they may faint, figure out what it means. That's just putting in my lead.
It's tough.
Yeah.
It's too loose.
I mean, I, I tried to figure out who wrote it, or how many people were involved with it, and they were amending iterations of it. But I think what it really takes is a group of people such as ourselves, or a subcommittee thereof, to hash through it and, you know, come to a consensus of language that needs to be deleted, needs to be added, agreed to, so that we can actually go forward sometime in the future, whether it's this fall or next spring, with a warrant article to, you know, pretty much clean it up, make it user-friendly for both the applicant and for those who are practicing permitting. Because it, it, OSRDs will always supersede a standard subdivision, you know, because it's costs, there's cost savings involved with it. And whenever there's cost savings, that's what a developer will, will really try to do.
Absolutely, the bottom line.
Plus, plus all we've got, for land that's left.
True.
So this is a very important ordinance within the zoning ordinance.
Yeah. So what, what, what role do you see with town council in this?
I think what we can do as a group, if we want to form a subcommittee, you know, to work on it, or if we want to work on it all together, when we have time or in regular meetings, I, I just ran out of time to go through the entire thing with my own language, but as I pointed out in the staff report, you know, I got the page four and I struck out language that I think really needs to be struck out in, and put in bold print, you know, new language. And, you know, we can go through the entire ordinance like that, the 15 pages that exist of the OSRD, and just truly clean it up.
Amount with 10.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Get rid of the redundancy, get rid of all the extra lingo that just does nothing but confuse you.
I think that's great, John.
I mean, I've talked to a couple of attorneys about it and they agree.
Hmm.
You know, it's hard to figure-
Put together.
One, one of the things, and I did point it out in specific terms, any plan that is recorded at the registry of deeds, it's a licensed surveyor that prepares the plan. If there's engineering involved with it, such as a site plan and a subdivision plan with engineering requirements, that's a professional engineer that has to draw. Stamps and signatures of surveyors and engineers are what are accepted at the registry of deeds. Landscape architects and land use planners don't have that type of professional acknowledgement relative to the recording of plans. Landscape architects and land use planners don't have that type of professional acknowledgement relative to the recording of plans. So within the OSRD regulations, you know, we, we can suggest in those ranks the use of a landscape architect in the development team. And, you know, they, and they can stamp the plan, but relative to the recording of the final plan, it has to have a professional engineer and surveyor.
So I, I think, I, I think they're two separate issues, and, and I think, yeah, so there's a whole lot of stuff to talk about. How, how would you? How would you like to proceed with this, John? Like to, what, what do you think?
What I'd like to do at this point in time, um, is to, for me to continue on with it, um, for our next meeting, and I should be able to really cut through the whole thing. Give it to preceding the meeting and give you a chance to read through it, and, um, we can have a real fruitful meeting at that point.
Would it be helpful to schedule that meeting now?
Well, I, I'm just thinking the twenty-third, August twenty-third meeting, you know, we should be able to handle it as a workshop. Yeah, and I'll have the whole ordinance.
Okay, can we?
Picked through by.
Can we make a commitment to on the, if the board is in agreement, that the only thing on that agenda is this and nothing else? No minutes, no vouchers, no correspondence?
What, what is that date?
Well, that's a, that's our next regulation.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I was thinking it was a, I was thinking it was.
We're looking for a day just for this.
May, may I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
I, I made, I, I, I went through a little bit. I, I loved the first four pages, you, you did great. And I, I made some markups. I, I'd like to be able to give this to John, just because I made my markups on the rest of the pages.
Oh, good.
And, um, maybe, maybe the process could be you come up with what you think is the right way to go. Get that to us, and then we could all sort of have a chance to mull it over and then hold a meeting. And then bring it to a, a, another planning board meeting and, and then hold, figure out when we'll get that workshop in so that we can have that discussion. That way we're not opening it up fresh that night of the workshop and saying, well, okay, now let's look at this.
For sure. For sure.
Really, you know, I really wanna progress with this particular as a cleanup item before we do anything else. Because we're always gonna get hit. With any land remaining, this is in all likelihood the type of permit we're gonna be reviewing. You know, so, you know, if we were all more knowledgeable about this ordinance content, what it allows for, you know, it's gonna take a lot of consternation out of the review process. 'Cause right, right now it confuses everybody.
There, there's a lot of.
Yeah, we've spent too much time on this, every application because of our, everybody's got their own interpretation.
You know, the, the, the last position I had in Hudson, we had the same thing, was called an open space development. But we never had a standard subdivision, and there's a lot of land in Hudson that's.
Yeah.
I mean, they have new subdivisions all the time. In the last fourteen years, it hasn't been one standard subdivision because this is the way all developers will go. If you only have to build a half a mile of roadway as opposed to a mile, and you're cutting down the frontage requirement in half, you know.
And the lots.
Yeah, and the, and the bonus for the town is that you, you keep more trees, you know. More trees remain standing, more contiguous open spaces.
But in, in, in theory, the cost of the housing comes down as well.
Yeah. In theory.
As long as when you establish that yield, that establishment of yield is true.
Yeah, it's a limit.
It's true.
Yeah.
Because you can draw a lot of things and a lot of plans and say, yeah, yeah, I, I can get these lots, and.
One thing that I've recognized, and a lot of people do, history gets lost so fast. You know, this, the action of this planning board from last year, you know, you struggle to recall this and that. Imagine ten years from now, in, like, National Avenue. You know, and I've done a lot of research on the plan that was approved back then. Ultimately, it was never approved by the town, except as a public way. The plan was approved by the planning board.
I remember that coming to town meeting, I don't tell.
In nineteen ninety-one, October twenty-second.
And it, it didn't get a vote for?
And it got defeated. I gave this presentation last night to the economic development committee, because, you know.
It got defeated? You're sure you're not talking about when the developer for National Ave came from the town, town meeting?
Well, that was much after ninety-one.
Kennedy, wasn't it?
Far, far after ninety-one.
There was two votes.
Well, in, in, all, all I got to history-wise now is October of nineteen ninety-one. And it was a very contentious moment in that town meeting, and it's, it's in the warrant. The annual requirement, and it was voted down as, um, they were trying to have that roadway accepted as a public street, and it was shot down at town meeting. I haven't gone beyond ninety-one, but I haven't found any evidence that, um, it received a formal vote. But the problem is the town maintains that roadway and has, so by positive prescription, adverse possession.
On the, on the official town map.
The, the history of that roadway being built, there are people that still live in town that have much better knowledge of the history than, than I do. It's been really interesting the last month researching, you know, the status of that roadway and how it came to be. You know, and then, when it, when it first came before the board, there was street acceptance, two voted not to accept it, two voted for to be accepted. Then it was reconsidered later, and then that was, I mean, it received a majority, but it didn't, didn't state what the majority vote of the board was. And it was pushed to the board of selectmen. Board of selectmen were not unanimous, and they accepted something, but it did make it to the town warrant, and there it was defeated by, um, the, um, the, the special town meeting, you know, October that year.
So, um, so as far as, uh, item B in the planning office, developing a workshop schedule, is that something we wanna put on hold then? Is that what, and just right now, just let you finish this up, and when you're ready to set a schedule for workshop?
Yeah, and, you know, realistically.
Take a target?
Yeah, depending on what comes in for this August twenty-third meeting, you know, obviously we have to take care of business.
Yeah.
As it emerges, and, you know, we may get a couple of plans in between now and then for hearings. But we should have time, and I will have time to go through that ordinance and make my corrections, produce a staff report. It will be an agenda item. Now whether or not we're gonna have the time necessary at that meeting to continue with this discussion on it depends on what gets submitted. But post Labor Day, we should be able to meet either as a full board or as a subcommittee thereof on a regular basis so that we can start to clean up the administrative issues that are before us. You know, and, and make that a regular agenda item pretty much until you get tired of it.
'Cause I, 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 I don't, speaking for myself, I, I know that something like this, um, I personally cannot deal with all this other stuff and this, this for one night's meeting is plenty. This is just me.
Should we maybe, ju- given that, should, should we maybe go at a certain point after you've gotten it and worked it all out to where you think the bugs are out of it, and we've gotten some comments back? Should we go directly to the hearing process at that point? Because we will need to hold a hearing before we can bring it to town meeting.
Well, I'd like to be able to talk about it without it being a hearing first.
I just look at it as, why waste the time? I mean, talk about it definitely, work it out, but begin the hearing process, I mean, because naturally you have to wait two weeks to notice and all that good stuff. And then what happens is you, you get too close to town meeting, so you can't bring it to fall.
You know, you, you always want to be progressive, but you don't, you don't have to be speedily progressive where you, you, you're missing something. You end up missing something. Do it, do it once, do it right.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we don't have to rush with this thing. So we have to get it done. You know, so we don't, we don't have to put ourselves under, you know, pressure, you know.
I don't know, having five people here tell us that we're wrong helps the drafting.
Oh, no, no, no. You know what, I, I, I imagine there's a collective yawn going out when people say, oh, we're gonna modify the OSRD. And there'll be a hearing, where a public hearing will be welcome, the yawn.
Like a section every week, break it up instead of the whole thing on.
Keep in mind, we can do that in hearing process.
Couple five pages, then.
We can continue as much as we can continue for after.
We'll be able to do this in a couple of meetings. There is no question about it. And so what if we have to have one special meeting, say the first, um, first Wednesday of the month, we have, you know, workshop devoted just to this. So we continue to do our business that we are responsible to do, and then we, um, you know, focus in on accomplishing this. You know, trying to do a zoning ordinance in its entirety is a big task.
So for this then, um, for this then, we're gonna, we're gonna leave it back with you. And it'll be on the August agenda.
Correct.
And if that agenda has nothing on it, we can talk about it more, and if it is a full agenda or whatever, it'll go to September. Is that right?
Yep.
Can I ask a question? If when we go back to two meetings a, a, a month, um, could we try to schedule the public hearings on the first meeting of the month? And then try to leave this as, for the second meeting of the month, leave this as more, more open? I mean, obviously, it's not always gonna work out that way, but.
Yeah, and, and I suggested this the last meeting, remember, where, you know, with some business we have to take care of from meeting to meeting, you know, the administrative stuff. But if we can, if we can get away with, um, loading up one of the meetings per month with, with the public hearings and have the other meeting as a workshop slash agenda, I mean administrative stuff.
Yeah, the, the challenge will add, it will be, you know, the, the, the attention power of, you know, how many public hearings you can go through and.
Yeah, yeah. And who knows, we, you know, we, we may have a light year, you just don't know, you know, every year.
Did you get a notification?
It's like a day, a day in the office, you don't know if it's gonna, it's blowing on you or not.
I don't.
Did you get notifications of the medical marijuana?
Notification.
About notification from.
Um, they're dealing with some board of selectmen.
They did have it.
Yeah, they had it.
But they had, where the, we have to make that, it's on our special permit.
If they apply.
Yeah, that's what I mean, and do they.
What was that? I missed that, I'm so sorry.
They're still dealing with the board of selectmen though.
What?
Can we end the meeting and then talk about that?
There's another facility for medical marijuana.
Oh.
So they wanna lease it, according to what I witnessed at the slacking. Barry Enus.
Sure, we'll get a notice of that for whatever.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion has been made and it's consecutive to conclude our meeting. Aye, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.